Commissioner Hope.
President.
Commissioner Roberts.
President.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Gaus.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
All commission members present.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to you, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to take just a minute to update you on the two property-related items that we have on your agenda tonight. I think you mostly are up to speed on these, but take an opportunity here before the meeting if there are any questions. The one is just a letter of intent that relates to the property on the Witt Farm that we've been discussing where there's a we're of senior housing communities who's interested in that, in one of those sites. If you look at the graphic that was attached to their letter of intent parcel B that they're interested in, which we're pretty excited about because that's the most back corner of that piece of the property and as such requires that they address the the road to get back there and provide access and that same access will be that will be used for the Humane Society piece. And in fact, we have a meeting tomorrow morning with Humane Society to try to move along. Their property purchase, you'll recall, call you authorized that some time back, but it's not been effectuated. We've not come to a final purchase and sale agreement yet for that piece, so. Hopefully this will help move that along as well. You recall, their price was right around 8,000 an acre. This party is offering 20 an acre for about seven acres of land. But again, we're not agreeing to sell. This is just sort of a standstill agreement. They don't, they want to engage in some due diligence related to the properties and investigations and want us not to sell the property out from under them during that time. So the only effect of this agreement would be to agree to not sell the property to anyone else while we're continuing negotiations. Are there any questions on that particular item?
Yeah, Greg, and we went, we talked a little bit about this, but I just want to talk a little bit further. The road as well as the, any of the utilities and the like. Why don't we make a proactive move to develop some of that to make it into three parcels? And I know in, in the past, you said, you know, we want to keep it so we can be customized to the buyer's needs, but you, I mean, isn't there some value in us having the roads and the facilities and utilities in place for a buyer to come in and be like, hey, I got nine, or eight, nine, or seven acres?
Well, our hope is that, you know, typically when you sell a development piece, the infrastructure is part of the cost of developing that property. And so our hope is certainly that we will, through the sale process, be able to get others to build that infrastructure and we won't have to. You know, at the end of the day, if that proves problematic, that might be something that we want to do to to make it ready for, for sale. But, you know, you look at Tecumseh's Business Park up there and those roads, it's not a great thing for roads to sit unused, especially asphalt roads. They tend to deteriorate more quickly if they don't have traffic on them. So it's the compression, you know, and things grow up through them and such. And so you, you don't really want to build it if there isn't a user for it yet so much. I want to keep that timing close in time in my experience. So we'll see. But hopefully it'll be a moot point because this particular purchaser will, together with the Humane Society, will be interested in getting that done.
Thank you.
In regards to the Witt Farm, someone recently asked me what was going out there because they thought they, there was some movement of not construction necessarily, but moving, if I understood him correctly, moving of the, oh, I am really struggling tonight.
Maybe the surveyors were out there.
Oh, okay. Maybe that's what it was. And I said, well, we haven't voted on anything yet, so I can't imagine that anything has happened out there, but I haven't given it lately.
Yeah, I did give them permission to enter on the property and there's a, we're trying to define both the wetland boundary and then Savoy's, the boundary of Savoy's piece. And so it may have been related to that. I don't, I'm not specifically aware of anything, but I know.
I imagine that's what it was. They said there were tire marks and different things through there and wanted to know what was happening. And I said, well, you know, we're looking at it, but nothing concrete has happened yet. So, okay.
We drew the, we drove through there too, so it might have been our tile tire marks. Will and I moved through there.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anything else on the Witt Farm piece? Okay, and then the Mark, with respect to the Marvin Farm, what you have before you is a proposed amended purchase and sale agreement that would have them purchasing the entire 102 acre parcel that is the eastern parcel of those two pieces out there. The exhibits that are attached to that are a little confusing if you looked at those. If you looked at A2 and didn't understand what that was, all A2 is supposed to be is a representation of where a road would go to serve that property. Again, it's development land and so it will be incumbent upon them to construct the infrastructure that's necessary to to utilize the property. And we've had some discussions with purchasers about that. But it's, Exhibit A1 shows the piece. It's not as clear as it could be, but it's, it's the eastern piece of the two and we would still own 55 acres that is accessed off Sand Creek Highway to the west of the property that they're interested in. So the purchase price, as we discussed before, for the total property would be 1.3 million dollars. That comes out to about 12,750 an acre averaging out over the whole parcel. So this would subsume the deal that we already had for the 20 acres and give them a little bit more time as it relates to their due diligence period delvo. Frankly, I think they'll probably need even more time than that, given the timing of planning commission meetings and such, and they don't have anything pending before planning commission right now. If in fact, they want to get to the point where they have one one facility completely approved, as in with selling exception permit and site, and site plan approval. Obviously, they can't get the whole 102 acres approved in the relevant timeframe. And we've made clear to them that we expect them to close on the entirety of the property, not, not do it piecemeal. So that, that's what that is about. Happy to answer any questions that you have on, on that transaction. Okay, well, if there are none, hopefully you'll be comfortable with each of those. As I say, they're both on, both agreements are on the agenda for approval, but the one is really just taking it temporarily off the market agreement. That's the letter of intent. The other would amend our purchase agreement to include the entire 102 acres. Then our next item on the pre-meeting agenda is a discussion of the bids that we received for the new ambulance that you gave us direction to proceed with securing bids for. And so Chief Massengill is here to explain how those bids came in. And again, there is an action item on the regular meeting agenda related to this. Chief?
Yes, good evening. So you do have the the resolution that, that we presented. And as you'll see on the, on the resolution, the, what we presented to you is not the cheapest option. And it was not the last time that we bought an ambulance. And all for the same reasons, we're recommending not buying the cheapest. We feel with all the research we did, we've done, that going with the cheapest is not the most cost effective. And that's why we want to buy the one that, that we think is going to last the longest. We've had great experience with the one we, we currently have. The way it's built is, is everything is welded together instead of the other manufacturers use a high bonding tape to tape the panels together. And where the, the one we currently have, the Bron we currently have is, is completely welded. I did put, I think there's about a dozen reasons on the memo why we wanted to stick with the Bron. And all of those reasons, the, the least expensive and the, the second least expensive, neither one of those met the specifications that we, we sent out. And we sent out the specifications that were the same as the one we currently have. So the one, the cheapest one had six pages of exceptions. One of the, the most important ones to us is the interior cabinets in that truck are all made of wood and they don't last as long. Where our current one, we we are planning on, long after I'm here, to keep re-chassising that box, which is, is a very common thing to do because it's all aluminum. It's all welded. It never deteriorates, breaks down, that sort of thing, like the, the wood cabinets would, and you'd have to end up replacing those. The second, the second least expensive one was did have the metal interior cabinets. It had three pages of exceptions in the bid specs. And a lot of it was the construction, how they, how they construct the vehicle. Like I said, they, the Bron does not use any extrude aluminum. They don't use any, any of the high, what's it called? High, high bonding tape. So everything is welded on the one that we want to move forward with. This price does include all of the equipment, the stretcher, the power load, the cardiac monitor, the Lucas device. So that, that besides Band-Aids and four by fours and, and oxygen tanks, that price will, is all inclusive to put it on the road. So like Administrator Elliott said, we're just here to, to see if anybody has any questions on that. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mayor, those were the only two items that I wanted to discuss with the commission at pre-meeting. So the rest of the time is yours.
All right. Are there any other items that the commission would like to discuss in our pre-meeting? Hearing none, I'm now going to move into public comment. And I will open it up for any public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So my question is, on a third ambulance, we were just told that we could rechassis the existing ambulance or the existing unit. Why can't we just get another body, have that on the end instead of putting it in a third unit? You know, back in the day, the, with the federal government, people were questioning why you're being involved in wars that we had no business getting involved in. And since here, we're getting involved with supporting or supplementing things in township that we really have no business getting involved in. Right now, with the pension deficit, I think as of the spring 2020, that hit $24 million. And we keep saying we're paying it down, but in the last five years, in 2015, the deficit was 20.5 million. 2016, it was 20.4 million. In 2017, it went down to 19.4. In 2018, it went back up to 21 million. And then just, you know, with, there's several current commissioners on board who, you know, were against, or wanted to cut down the pension deficit. But we had the sharpest increase from 2018 to 2019 with the pension increasing over 3.5 million dollars. And I would like to see that money go towards the pension deficit in lieu of another fire department that is going to service people outside of the city of Adrian. Another protocol question would be with respect to an ambulance. What if an Adrian resident needs an ambulance? And that ambulance is 20 miles away, servicing a township person? Wouldn't it be that on our face if someone worked half the way because he didn't have an ambulance here? So I still don't think that we should be getting involved eventually. The other thing that I wanted to bring up with respect to the ambulances is, can't it handle if the ambulance is going to come, there are questions for additional personnel? And in comparison to other communities, and this is from the Lara website from the state of Michigan. According to that website, there are 22 FTEs, a fire department for the city of Adrian, company only has four. Jackson, a much, much larger city, Adrian has 22 FTEs. Jackson, according to Lara, only has 19. Compared to Monroe, Monroe is about 32,000, about 10,000 more people. Monroe has 13 FTEs, where the city of Adrian has 22. Stedford, Stedford has 30,000 people and they have two FTEs. Adrian has 22. None of those are college towns that I'm aware of. So if you want to compare things to a college town, the Adrian Fire Department has 22 FTEs, where the city of Good landing only has 15. If you take a deeper dive into these numbers, you'll find that there are 18 fire departments in Lenawee County with a total of 496 firefighters. And of that amount, 38 or 7.6, 7.6% are full-time state firefighters. Plus predominant 440 or 93% are part-time volunteers. 22 of the 38 FTEs in Lenawee County are employed by the city of Adrian. Eight are employed by Madison Township, the township's work in keeping the ambulance service system. Three of the FTEs belong to companies and then scattered throughout the county, there are five additional fire departments with one FTE. If we take a look at the four counties surrounding this, surrounding Lenawee County, Hillsdale, Jackson, and all of Washington, there are a total of 1,285 firefighters, according to Lara website. And of that, 17% are non-state volunteers. 26% or 340 are state full-time FTEs and 57% are part-time. In itself, this may not be a significant contributor. So you look at the city of Adrian and our pension deficit for the fire department, which is in excess of 5.8 million dollars. And adding a third ambulance would only result in additional staff and an increase in the pension deficit. Now, you're going to say something about their third is a fine benefits program, but my take on it is if they're paying it through the fine benefits program, they're not paying it through original pension, which is going to decrease the value of that pension. And looking at the numbers from the spring 2020 merger report, it, it supports that. The city claims we're paying down the pension deficit, but the numbers tell us different stories. Again, I would like to see the funds applied towards the pension deficit, which topped 24.6 million dollars, according to 2020 NERF report. Thank you.
Caller, missing link. Before you go, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Daniel Garth, 110.
Thank you.
Mayor, that brought up a quick question for me. Can I ask it at this time?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Chief Massengill, does buying this third ambulance add any firefighters to the force?
No, this, the plan for this is actually to be a, a backup and a reserve.
Yeah. So, so we can provide better service to our residents, right? So, so if we're taking somebody to the hospital, we still have a really good, really, really good ambulance on staff. And, and right now, if we don't, our current one might be in the shop because it's got 90,000 miles on it and the bumpers are falling off, right? So, so this provides better service to our residents. It kind of falls in the plan that we started with for the ambulance, right?
Right. This was in the original plan was putting a third ambulance, one as a reserve and running the, the other two as primary.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That makes really good sense. And I think it's a good plan, chief.
Is there any other public comment? Hearing none, may I get a motion to adjourn?
移到了, Watson.
Support, help.
I have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Halt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned and we will meet at seven o'clock for our regular city commission meeting. I'm going to make sure that Kelly, Commissioner Castleberry is back before we begin. All right. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for November 16th, 2020. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Hope.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
Commissioner Ca- Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes of the November 2nd, 2020 regular meeting of the Adrian City Commission? Move to approve the minutes. Roberts.
Support, help.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss. Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
Move to pay the vouchers as presented. Watson.
Support, Strayer.
I have a motion to pay the vouchers as presented by Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
Tonight, we have two special orders, and I'm going to ask city administrator Greg Elliott to explain why we have two special hearing, um, special orders, and then we have resolutions to set a new public hearing for these.
Uh, thank you, mayor. So originally, when we set out the public hearing notices for the two special orders that are on the agenda tonight, they were noticed as being both at the Armory and participation available by Zoom. Uh, because of, uh, the COVID situation, we were not able to hold the meeting in person at the Armory. Given that, uh, we're going to go ahead and conduct the Zoom part portion of the public hearing tonight, but then we're going to renotice those hearings for your next meeting for anyone who was planning on attending at the Armory. And, uh, they'll have, uh, another opportunity to speak at your next meeting.
Thank you. Special Order One is a public hearing to hear and consider comments on the establishment of a special assessment district for improvements to Lau Avenue, SAD number 391. I'm going to now ask our city engineer to, um, please describe briefly those that, that special assessment.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, the special assessment, uh, it set out to, um, to cover some of the costs associated with the project, specifically on Edison and Lau. Uh, the special assessment is set out to the homeowners, um, to cover the cost of the curb work and their drive approach. Um, so each homeowner will be assessed for the, uh, the length of the curb that fronts their property and the size of their drive approach.
Thank you. I now call the public hearing to order to hear and consider comments on the establishment of a special assessment district for improvements to Lau Avenue. At this time, we will listen to any public comments about this.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Ken Tokar's, one ten, South Locust. Um, I am philosophically opposed to special assessment districts, and I believe that the city of Adrian is biased when it comes to creating special assessment districts as it does not create the districts equitably. Residents pay taxes and those tax dollars should be saved and put into a rainy day fund to pay for all road costs. Just recently, the township residents, who seem to have more power than the city of residents, the township residents, and I believe Raisin Township, were able to vote down, not have six people make the decision for them. The city spent a half million dollars of taxpayer monies to upgrade the size of the water line to the new hospital, and they did not create an SAD because they could not. The city resurfaced Sienna Heights Drive in Oakwood without an SAD. The city is installing new streetlights downtown, and they did not create an SAD. The city is installing digital sign banners and power outlets downtown and did not create an SAD. The city upgraded stormlines on Scott Street and did not create an SAD. The city updated streets in the Trenton Hills subdivision and did not require sidewalks and curbs to be put in and did not create an SAD. During the past 14 years, the city has repaved or resurfaced downtown streets on three separate occasions, and they have not created an SAD. The city of Adrian is the only community in Michigan that I am aware of that does not, that does not consider back of curb the end of your property. Think about it. I'm responsible for the back of curb to grass to sidewalk. I called the city of Tecumseh. Tecumseh, if they repave a road, they do not charge their residents for curb and gutter. They only charge them for the splash off at the apron. Uh, a couple other things with regards to the resolution. The resolution did not include, and it seems like someone would have already had time to go out there and say, okay, this property needs 10 feet of curb. This property needs five feet of curb. All that we saw in the notice was that it's a half million dollar project and that X dollars are going to be distributed to the property owners. Um, let's see. So with regards to that, I believe that the residents have a right to know what they will be charged for ahead of the work. And lastly, I would question the cost per lineal foot. I did look at the Vine Street SAD, and I believe it was $36 a lineal foot foot for curb and gutter. And when I looked up what other communities were charging for curb and gutter, it seemed to be in the $19 range. So, um, it just seems odd that, uh, that we're so high. Thank you.
Not hearing any more comments. I now call this meeting, this, um, this public hearing closed. Special Order Number Two is a public hearing to hear and consider comments on the establishment of a special assessment district for improvements to Addison Street, SAD number 392. Again, I'm going to ask our city engineer to explain what will be happening on this special assessment district for Addison Street.
Uh, this will be the same as Lau. We will be, uh, removing all the curb and gutter, all the drive approaches, all the asphalt and all the base underneath, and, um, replacing it with, uh, brand new materials. Um, each resident will again be assessed for the, the curb in front of their house as well as the, the drive approach as well.
Thank you. I now call the public hearing to order to hear and consider comments on the establishment of a special assessment district for improvements to Addison Street.
Uh, Ken Tokar's, one ten, South Locust. Um, again, I philosophically disagree with special assessment districts. Um, in specific, to the Addison Street, uh, special assessment district, I question the city's responsibility for this work. Uh, I talked to several residents in the area, and it is my understanding that the city has been negligent in maintaining water lines in that area, and I am questioning whether or not the high groundwater table caused by leaking water lines created this need to perform this work on Addison Street. And because of that, I do not think that the homeowners should be responsible. I was also told that there are some owners who have had to put sump pumps in their basement or who have had to have work done in their basement because of a high water table. So on top of residents paying to run a sump pump 24/7 because the city did not maintain the water lines, I think it's like a, a double, a double, a double payment on the part of the Addison Street residents. Uh, the curb and gutter there, it looks in good shape. In fact, it looks in just as good a shape as the curb and gutter on Sienna Heights Drive, but we didn't replace it there. So it really seems that the only need to replace curb and gutter on Addison Street is because of the city's leaking water lines. With respect to the water lines, the water department and, and su- and stormwater department, they generate excess revenue of $2 million a year, which I feel should be applied towards this project. Um, let's see. Thank you.
Hearing no more comments. I now call this public hearing closed. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution R 20 dash 203 is from Parks and Engineering. It is a resolution to set a new public hearing for the establishment of a special assessment district for improvements to Lau Avenue, SAD number 391. May I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Help.
Support, Strayer.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20 dash 204 is from Parks and Engineering. It is a resolution to set a new public hearing for the establishment of a special assessment district for improvements to Addison Street, SAD number 392. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Strayer.
Support, Gauss.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Mr. Strayer.
Say that again, Robin. You were hard to hear.
Mr. Share.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry. She there?
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20 dash 205 is from FIRE. It is a resolution to award a bid for the purchase of a new ambulance and equipment. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Watson.
Mr. Castleberry.
I'm going to give that second to Strayer and Castleberry. Robin?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer and Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20 dash 206 is from Administration. It is a resolution to authorize the city administrator to execute a letter of intent for the prospective sale of city-owned property on M 52. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? Move to adapt the resolution. Roberts.
Support, help.
Are there any public comments?
Uh, yes, Mayor Don Taylor, four seven five Meadowbrook Drive. I would fully support this. I have one quick question, though. Unless I missed it in a packet, it didn't indicate what the proposed use of the property was. Although since I see us for senior housing, I may well live there at some point, but it's good to know when we review the packet, unless I miss it, I apologize, what the use is intended for. So, thank you.
Are there any commissioner comments?
If I may.
Go ahead, Commissioner Watson.
Uh, real quick, um, you know, it's exciting times, um, for how much property that we're selling right now in the city. This is property that we've, we've had for a long time in inventory, and, um, you know, maybe this is an indication of, of good things to come in the future for Adrian. So I just wanted to share that on some of this.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20 dash 207 is from Administration. It is a resolution to approve an amended purchase agreement with Objective Growth Michigan LLC for city-owned property on West Beecher Road. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Strayer.
Support.
Who'd you get there, Robin?
I got them both. I got Halt and Watson, right?
Yes.
Right at the same time.
Yes, I'll share with them, I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any public comment?
Uh, yes, Mayor Don Taylor, four seven five Meadowbrook Drive. Um, so unless I'm mistaken, an entity close to this, or maybe the same one, um, purchased or is purchasing 20 acres at the front of this property for $25,000 an acre. Now we want to sell them, um, 102 acres for a million three at $12,745 an acre. Back to your comment, Commissioner Watson. Uh, boy, seems to be a great demand for our property. Why are we giving it away? Um, I know it's a big sale. It's great. I, I read everything. Obviously, it's going to be all marijuana, so we'll become the marijuana capital of the world, but anyway. Um, I don't quite understand. I said this before. When you had an offer for $600,000 for 20 acres and you, and then you reduced it to 500 against the recommendation of your against the recommendation of your city administrator, now you're selling this property at half the price. Does somebody explain to me the rationale for this, other than just wanting to start gaining some tax dollars on it? Thank you.
Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Help and Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry. She there? Mayor Heath.
She said yes, she just did.
Yeah, I saw her.
Okay. Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20 dash 208 is from Administration. It is a resolution to waive the bid process and authorize technology upgrades to the city chambers building. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolutions, Strayer.
Support, Roberts. Is there any public comment?
Uh, Ken Toakars, 110 South Locust. Several years ago, we, we had an emergency work, emergency, we waived the bid process to create an emergency water fountain. Not sure what emergency that was, and I think just because of that whole fiasco, I think you should never, ever, 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 never, ever, 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 never, ever waive the bid process. Thank you.
Are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor, if I might.
Go ahead, Commissioner Help.
Um, I support this project 100% when it comes to upgrading the chambers to make, um, meetings more crisp, clear, visual for our residents. I think this is going to be the future going forward. Um, we were doing Zoom for a lot of months and then we were in person for a couple, now we're back at Zoom and I don't anticipate seeing that change. Um, I do think that, um, I remember the water fountain issue. Um, I spoke out against it when I was, uh, not on the commission, but um, these kind of projects, I think, have to go through due diligence and have to be bid out. Um, I ran 2015 on as one of my core principles as never supporting a waiver of a bid unless we could go to like the My Deal program, so, um, I'm going to hold to that. Um, I think it's, um, again, the projects, it has to happen, I think, because, uh, for our citizens, but I don't think it's prudent. I don't think it's responsible to just award a contract without going through the process of this size.
Madam Mayor, I've got a couple of comments. First of all, I agree with Commissioner Help. Uh, I too am not in favor of waiving the bid process for, for any project, but from time to time, we have to do that. But I'm not sure exactly where our authority to waive the bid process comes from. And I'd like to ask the city attorney if she has any information or could provide us any guidance in terms of when we can and when we cannot, um, waive, waive bids.
Uh, Commissioner Gauss, I did look into that today and, um, as one of the callers stated, when it's an emergency, there is a process that can be followed. However, not all things are emergency, as the caller also pointed out. The Charter gives us very specific guidelines on what the commission has authority to do with regard to purchases and how the bids need to be accomplished. I have looked into it and I, right now, wouldn't advise that the commission waive the bid. But I don't have a final opinion on that just yet. I think that by end of day tomorrow, I'll have a little bit more information about whether there is a circumstance, um, related to a bid like this where you could waive, but as of right now, um, that would not be my advice.
Would your advice be to table the resolution?
You could table the resolution, but if you table the resolution, you'll just, you may end up coming back and needing to vote it down and start over with a bid process. Whereas if you made a decision on it tonight, you could always put a new resolution on it the next meeting if you decided to move forward the way it's structured now, or if you decide to move forward with the bid process, you can put the appropriate resolution on. Totally your call. But I don't think that tabling it will help resolve the issue necessarily.
Okay, so if I understand your, your guidance is we should, if, if we want to have you research this completely, we should vote down the resolution tonight until we get the further guidance from you.
Yes, that, that would be my best advice that I could offer.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of comments. I, I totally understand Commissioner Health's thinking. Uh, this is sort of an unusual situation, though, in that Mr. Lally made a proposal and his prices are already public. So I don't know how you go back and say, alright, we're going to start over. Um, and this is a situation too where staff reached out to Mr. Lally to get his professional opinion on how we should handle a situation. We didn't go to him with a list of specs and tell him to quote on this. We asked for his help. He came and he, he offered his professional advice. Now, if we were to put it out for bid now, you could, either somebody could look totally at what he did and undercut him, or in another scenario, if you put this out to say, I'm just hypothetically, three different companies and said, this is what we want to do, in this type of business, they could all three come back with totally different plans, totally different equipment. All of the plans may accomplish the same thing, but now what you've done is you've put our staff in a position to have to figure out technically, what is the best way to go? And I don't think that we have anybody on staff that is qualified to make that judgment. That's why we've already reached out to Mr. Lally, who we already have a working relationship with. So I personally am very comfortable making this move. And I do agree that it's, uh, it's an unusual move, but to do anything other than move forward with it tonight, I, I think is, is clumsy. So I guess that's, I, I think that we need to move forward with this. And at the same time, this is not a half a million dollar project. Let's keep in mind that what we're looking at here, we're looking at, you know, approximately $40,000. So, uh, that's where I'm at with this.
I guess I'll, I'll, I'll kind of rebut what Lad's saying is that, is that staff should have knew better. You know, staff should have knew better than to put a waiver of bid in front of us um, without discussing with us. Um, now, we did ask Mr. Lally for a proposal. Um, not necessarily pricing. I wanted to know what we needed to get that chamber's fit to the ideal specs that our citizens will be able to view and, and, and when it comes to audio and video, crisp, clear, our conversations, our debate, um, and, and, you know, and so forth. So I think it's on staff that they should have knew better than to put a resolution like this in front of us, especially knowing my track record of being very vocal against wavering any bids. So, um, again, it's like, um, if it passes, it passes, but I think it's, I think, you know, when we're dealing with taxpayer money, we have to always go through the process when it's over $10,000. Um, on very rare occasions, we don't, but I've always been true to that and I, and I'm going to stick to it.
So speaking in defense of staff for a minute, um, we did have this on the agenda last time, Mr. Lally presented and, uh, you know, my, my understanding and my direction from commission was to, uh, find a way to pay for it, which we did. You have regularly waived the bid process when circumstances, uh, made that make sense. There is authority, as I read the Charter and Section 12.1 of the Charter provides comparative prices shall not be required when the city administrator shall determine that no advantage to the city would result. Uh, every resolution that we've put forward that waves, proposes to waive the bid process uh, has canned language in there about the recommendation of the city administrator for that reason. And that's relevant as well. Uh, I do believe that would be true in those circumstance. Uh, because of the research that we've put into this, the Mr. Lally has given us for free, uh, in getting us functional during the times that we wanted to hold in-person meetings. I, I feel like, I mean, trust is a big word, but I feel like I trust that this is a very proposal and that we're not, uh, squandering the taxpayers' resources on uh, providing a special benefit to someone, uh, that would not be, um, competitive. Now, that said, I have no vested interest in seeing this go forward. We're, we were more than happy to, to facilitate comparative pricing if that's the commission's desire. But to be clear, I think that you can do this if, if you want to, that there's a regular process that has been your regular process over quite a number of years, uh, that would, that would allow for it.
But I'll rebut that, Mr. Elliott, is that it was a problem and they did waive a lot of bids before I got into commission. And when Lad and I got elected in 2015, we shut that down. So, um, I think just from a, from a staff standpoint, um, a straw poll would have been proven in, in this situation, so we're not talking about it in public like this, but, um, this does not constitute as emergency, in my opinion. I don't feel that, I feel that there is competitive businesses locally, um, that could maybe bring something, um, more competitive to the table. I don't view my job when I sit up here as, as a, I don't get emotional, I don't get connected, I, I do my job. And I think that just if we get into habit again, like it did before 2015 of just aborting contracts because we're comfortable, I think that's irresponsible.
I would, I would completely agree with that. It shouldn't be a habit.
Mayor, if I could, um, without going into great detail about it, I do just want to say, um, City Administrator and I had a conversation today and today is one of the first days we've had to agree to disagree, but we do interpret the Charter differently. I would prefer not to go into great detail about that in a public meeting, but I would ask once again that the commission, give time for this to be reviewed and for me to be able to give a report back to them, um, before any action is taken on this item.
I have another comment, if I may. First of all, I respect your opinion, Commissioner, Commissioner Administrator Elliott. I think that, um, you know, you've got a good background and I respect your opinion. On the other hand, uh, Ms. Henigan is the city attorney. We pay her to give us advice about what we can and cannot do. And so my preference is to, to defer to her on this matter and get her feedback before we make any decisions. Thank you.
I agree with, uh, some things, uh, Commissioner Strayer said as well. I am very concerned about shortchanging, uh, Mr. Lally, as we already got cost planning from him and, uh, whether it be, uh, staff or, or commission that requested that. At the beginning, we did sound more like there was some urgency in that, uh, when we discussed it in the past. And in researching his costs, I found him to be, uh, very, uh, midline in costs and, and, um, and just my due diligence in, in researching his costs. Um, and so there was some great discussion about sound and clearly I've had some technical difficulties this evening and we talked about hearing and things like that. Um, so does anybody have any questions about, or any comments about the urgency we discussed last week? Or, or at the last meeting about, um, going further with technology?
Well, I think, I think, you know, when we talked about it last meeting, I think that we were anticipating on going back into the chambers in some sort of form. Um, obviously with the news of, uh, last night, I think that we're going to be in this format for the foreseeable future, I think. So, um, I don't think that there's such a sense of urgency now, maybe then it was. But even, even, even so, I think that, um, it would have still been, in my opinion, again, I'm just one person, it, it, it still would have been responsible to, to send it out. And then if we wanted, we didn't, we don't have to take the low bid, I mean, but following the process has always been important to me. Um, we didn't take the low bid with the ambulance, so actually we took the highest priced ambulance. So we could have, you know, we don't have to take the bid, but as long as we bid it out and do our due diligence, follow the process, I think that that would make me sleep better at night, but this is one of those, these, one of those core principles that I, I just can't get behind and, 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 uh, but Drake does great work. I mean, he does really good work and he's probably going to do work for me in the future and, and this has nothing to do with him or what he brings to the table, because I'm very well aware of what he, what he's accomplished, but, from a money standpoint, I would like to give the best price or try to give the best price.
Can I ask a question here as far as if we, if, if we don't proceed tonight, what do you do with Mr. Lally's quote? What we're hearing here.
I don't know what that is.
Emute that? Do we know where it's coming from?
I'm looking, but I don't see anybody on here that's not a commissioner that's.
I would suggest we all mute and then she can figure it out.
Yep, I'll unmute everybody real quick. Okay, so have everybody muted? You're not going to be able to unmute yourselves for a second. I'm just trying to see if I see anything weird going on here. I'm going to unmute and we'll see what happens, but we may have to shut down and restart, Mayor, just so you know. We'll see how it goes.
There you go. Sorry.
Okay, uh, to answer Commissioner Strayer's question, um, Drake's, uh, proposal that he currently has would need to be submitted, um, with the correct requirements for whatever RFP is put out for the bid. He could use that same proposal if he so chooses, um, or he could amend it. I also would want to reiterate what Commissioner Help said, that you do not have to take the lowest bid. The Charter, um, gives the allowance for the commission to take a different bid if they feel that it's, um, in the best interest of the public. And so that would be your determination at that time, whenever the bids come in. And it also gives you the right to reject, any or all other bids. Those, um, rights you do have authority on in the Charter. So I, I'm with the rest of you, you know, I'm not trying to say whether he should get it or not, but he can submit that same, um, bid in the proper format and, um, you can look at it from there.
As I recall, we, we've talked about urgency. Um, as, as I've recalled our past meetings, the urgency was to get a solution. I don't remember, um, ever going to a point of saying that we needed to get uh, bids in or, or to waive the bid to get the solution in place as soon as possible, because we were all starting from the dark. And it was alluded to earlier that the staff isn't overly familiar with. that the staff isn't overly familiar with the the solutions as well. So I I yeah, I I think that's a that's a key point for me as I'm contemplating this, because I'm struggling with this decision myself.
Yeah, I guess it would be different if Drake wasn't a known entity. But he has already done a lot of work for us. He's done a lot of work for us for free. We know what he can do. It's not like we're rolling the dice here.
Yeah, but if he if he's done work for us for free, I mean, we can pay him for services, and maybe we should with this in mind.
He's just been there to help us out.
Absolutely, and and I do appreciate that for sure.
And I would just like to say that I, you know, I I think Drake is great. He's amazing at what he does. And this is no way a reflection on him. It is a reflection on, I I feel like on us that we we should have we we should make sure that we do go through the proper channels and that we do have that bid process. Is it fair that now Drake's information, his quotes, everything is out there? And, you know, you're going to get people coming in? No, it's it may not be fair, but like has been stated several times tonight, we don't have to go with, you know, just because somebody bids lower doesn't mean we have to go with that person. But I just feel the process is very important here. And I don't believe it was an emergency. Even at the time, there was a sense of urgency for sure. But I don't feel like this has is an emergency situation. Yes, granted, in light of last night, it seems less of an urgency than it than it was before. And I still do think, though, that it is urgent because it's going to take a while. But I don't feel that it's an emergency. I just feel that there is a sense of urgency. And I feel like we do need to go through the proper channels and, you know, and go through the bid process and make sure that we are are doing due diligence. Hearing no more comments, I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please. You're on mute. There you go.
Sorry. Commissioner Roberts? Yes. Commissioner Watson?
No.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
No.
Commissioner Castleberry? Yes. Mayor Heath? No. Commissioner Help?
No.
Resolution fails by a four no, three yes vote.
Resolution R twenty dash two zero nine is from Human Resources. It is a resolution to approve the Technical Professional and Office Workers Association of Michigan, Adrian Public Employees Association Union Contract. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Watson.
Support, Strayer.
Is there any public comment?
Kent Oak Cars, one ten self locust. I guess I just I I've had several emails back and forth today. I just want to make sure everybody else is clear on this. This is not a union contract that has been previously ratified by council. It my understanding is that it's a union that's been around since two thousand sixteen, and it's gone through at least three administrators who have not presented it to city council for approval. You're you're creating a protected group of people. And while I'm in favor of that for certain positions, I kind of have an issue when you've got office managers listed and ordinance officers. You know, a seventy thousand dollar person as an ordinance officer really should not be a protected position. And I also want to remind council that you used to have individual contracts with these employees. So now this changes the whole game. Just recently, as three months ago, you guys got rid of an employee, and I believe you got rid of that employee to pay for an additional ordinance officer. And then now, you know, you don't even know what kind of work this person is going to do. And then you're kind of tying your hands where if this person is not performing, you you really can't do anything about it where you had that authority before. So I kind of question where this is coming from. And then if you dig a little bit deeper into ordinances, you know, our ordinance enforcement, Adrian's a small town. I know the community I used to live in, they had one point five FTEs, large college town, many rental properties, Ypsilanti it was, in fact. And they did a really good job with ordinance enforcement with their one and a half FTEs. And right now, the enforcement here is terrible. And then all of a sudden, we're gonna eliminate one person's position. And now we're gonna vote this in to approve and protect that position. And I just think something something's not right here. Thank you.
As we go into Commissioner comments, I would request that Heather, that you speak on this contract and 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 what it's going to do, please.
Sure. The resolution is for the settlement of a newly formed union in the city, their first contractor agreement. The main focal point, I would say, in this contract is really concessions that the city will be gaining with regard to the pensions for the affected employees that are part of this group. By making these pension cuts that are being proposed in this contract, the city is going to see long-term savings within our pension system. Those savings are mainly going to come from three different areas. The first area is lowering the multiplier used to calculate pension payments at the time of retirement for the employees in this group that are in the defined benefit pension. The second area is increasing the amount of increasing the amount employees are contributing or paying toward the pension system. And then the third savings area with this contract is closing the defined benefit pensions that currently exist in the city to any new hires coming in. So new hires will be going into what we call a defined contribution plan, which more closely resembles something like a 401K. The biggest savings really will come years down the road as employees transition out of the defined benefit and into these this defined contribution, which is a must much less expensive type of pension. And then lowering the pension multiplier, which I mentioned as the first item, will result in an immediate increase in the city's funding level for this group, which was roughly sixty one percent. And making this lowering of the multiplier will increase that funding level to roughly seventy four percent. So that in and of itself is a huge impact on the pension. And then obviously, in exchange for being able to negotiate those cost savings pension measures, the the union will receive some pay increases, you know, in exchange for that. And I guess I would say I would like to thank the unions really for helping us get to a place where we can put this tentative contract in front of you all for for a vote with such heavy concessions.
Are there any other Commissioner comments?
I do very briefly, Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Watson.
From from my tenure, starting in November of seventeen, I've been impressed with the ability of our staff to, and our union, I mean, our staff being union, as well as our staff being in-house to negotiate this. It really seems like we've got a common goal and and that everybody's giving a little bit here and there. And I think that's pretty special for for our our employees to realize that and to work with us on something of this magnitude. So I I really do appreciate that. And and I think it's worth noting that the position we end up in with this.
A large stack of plate ice, please.
Yeah, good. So so with this as as eighteen or nineteen contracts versus with it is as a unified group, our financial position is going to improve. So I think that's also worth noting versus having eighteen or nineteen individual contracts.
And I'd like, if if you don't mind.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Yep, thank you for explaining that in more layman's terms. I know negotiating contracts and that can be very difficult to understand what all of those terms mean. But the the biggest thing I want people to know is that we firmly believe that this will benefit the city.
Commissioner Help, did you have something?
Yeah, just piggybacking on Commissioner Roberts, Commissioner Watson, it's a it's a always a better, you know, it's always great for the city when we can work together with our unionized employees. And and I think, like when we negotiated with the police a few years back, and and they didn't even have to open up their contract. They opened up the contract, we worked with them, we gave them a pay increase like we did here, and then we reduced their multiplier. And I got two emails from some sergeants in the police department thanking me and thanking the commission that that and I simply I responded back to him, I said, we're in this together. So the pension issue's always been over our head. But the steps that this body has taken and the body, you know, before some of the newer members have been on, I think is a is it is is going to show a lot of success down the road when we start hammering away at this. We won't see it tomorrow. We won't see it in a year or two, but we will start to see an impact. And and I appreciate the employees because reducing the multiplier is a big deal to people. And 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 it could be a stickler, you know, you know, when you come to these kind of negotiations. So I appreciate our hardworking staff and the commission also coming together and Heather and and Greg and Will and whoever else negotiated this contract to get it behind us. And and again, we're all in this together, and and I appreciate everybody working together to get this done. Attention.
I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
You're on mute, Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Help?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
There are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any Commissioner comments on those reports? Now it is time for public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Kent Oak Cars, one ten locust. I guess I'd like to address some of Commissioner Strayer's comments. The city does have, and they do use consultants. Some of the consultants that you might not be aware of are Manix Smith. They're a consultant for your roads. I believe, and you were at the meeting, so you might have forgotten about this one, but Tetra Tech. Tetra Tech is another consultant that the city uses. So I guess for you to get up in a public meeting and say that the city doesn't use use consultants, I'm kind of confused where that where that would come from. With respect to the bidder, and I have no knowledge of the bidder, but I do have twenty years of public bidding experience. It's called lessons learned. Basically, if UPS, if you have a public bid and it doesn't get there because of UPS, they don't accept your bid. You get a flat tire, you don't get it in in time, you you don't, your bid doesn't go in. So I think you got a maybe a young bidder here who might not be familiar with the process, and this might be chalked up as a lesson learned. As far as moving forward with the sound system, there are several companies out there. VPL does the sound at Adrian High School in the auditorium. Carter Sound has done stuff in the media center. Joe Jenkins, he does a lot of work for the city. In fact, he does a lot of work for Ardelicious. Other all companies in the city of Adrian that could very easily provide you with with a quote for services. Thank you.
Go ahead, Don.
Go ahead, Drake.
Drake Lally, five ten Merrick Street. Just wanted to say that I do appreciate and respect the commission's responsibility to make the best decision, the the best decision here. Obviously, I care for the city more than this contract. So if other bids come in and you want a simple explanation of the technical pros and cons, I'm happy to demystify that. So I do feel that the proposal I submitted is competitive. But if there's another company out there that could offer a better value, then that's that's great. Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, Don Taylor, four seven five Meadowbrook Drive. Again, back to the Beecher Street property. I know this is after the fact, and it doesn't really matter, I guess. But I'm still intrigued by the fact that we're selling this property so low. And I know one of the commissioners texted me during the meeting and said, don't worry, I'll call you because this is double the price of agricultural property there. I don't view it that way. I view it as a as as valuable property that the city owns. We don't own that much, quite frankly. And I'm really surprised that you're giving it away in this bigger chunk at that price. So having said that, sayonara and good luck.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any Commissioner comments? Hearing no Commissioner comments, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Watson.
Support, Help.
I have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Help. All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned.